Good evening. I'm Janelle Van Duzen with the League of Women Voters of San Diego, and I will be your moderator for this virtual candidate forum. Even though we miss seeing you in person, we are reaching more people via Zoom who can hear directly from the candidates to help make this very important decision on the ballot. And you don't even have to get dressed or comb your hair. If you have any questions, please look in the chat box to find out how to reach us. The League is proud to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties, but always working on vital issues of concern to members and the public. Our Voters Edge website is your online resource for more information about the candidates, ballot issues, and detailed voting information. All candidates for local offices have been invited to include their information there at no cost. And both candidates have tonight have provided this information. Thank you. You will find a link in the chat. The League moderates candidate forums using a format that is fair and balanced yet informative. We have asked the candidates to keep to the issues of the position rather than personal attacks because our goal is for the voters to be able to learn more about the candidates than they get from campaigns and social media. The views expressed are those of the candidates, not of the League of Women Voters. Sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement by the sponsor or by the League. We are recording the forum, and it will be available unedited from beginning to end on our website, We asked attendees to submit questions online before the forum, but you may also submit questions using the link provided in the chat box. Please remember to use civility and respect in wording your questions and frame them so both candidates can answer. Assisting tonight as lead question screeners are Jane Andrews and Wanda Rogers, and the screener from the Sarah Mesa Community Council is Cindy McIntyre. The timekeeper is League member Jean Widener, and our Zoom administrator is Kim Knox. We plan to adjourn by 8:00 PM. This is the forum for San Diego City Council District 7. All viable candidates were invited, and they are all attending this evening. Candidates will have two minutes for their opening statements, two minutes for their closing, and one minute to respond to each question from the audience. We will alternate who answers each question first. Prior to the start of the event, the order of speaking was determined randomly, and Mr. Raul Campillo will give the first opening statement, followed by Noli Zosa. So, Raul, your opening statement, please.
Very good. Thank you, everyone, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. Really appreciate you and for doing this in January as well. My name is Raul Campillo. I'm a deputy city attorney prosecutor in our city attorney's office, and I'm also a member of the Gun Violence Response Unit, nationally acclaimed in different newspapers for helping prevent school shootings, suicides, and other, a lot of domestic violence as well, by obtaining gun violence restraining orders. That's what I do right now to serve the city of San Diego. I grew up in East County in El Cajon, and I went to Uni High School, University of San Diego High School on Linda Vista Road. And then I attended Harvard for undergrad, and then I was a teacher for a few years in North Las Vegas, serving in an impoverished neighborhood as a fifth-grade teacher, all subjects. And then I returned to Harvard Law School. After that, I was a member, an associate, of a law firm specializing in white-collar criminal investigations, where I honed my skills investigating corruption and white-collar crime at Fortune 500 companies in the automobile, energy sector, and in pharmaceuticals and Medicare. The core reasons of why we're running, my campaign is focused on, is dealing with homelessness and housing affordability, something that affects everybody, and especially Sarah Mesa, fixing our infrastructure and being committed to public safety. You know, these are local issues, and I'm sure tonight we're going to be talking about local policies. What I want you to keep in mind is that, you know, this is my hometown, and I went elsewhere to be educated and got my skills. But as soon as I had the chance, came back home to San Diego. This is a town I love. It's where my family still lives in East County. It's where all my family, my grandfather lives in North Park, my cousins have lived in PB, and now I live in Mission Valley and in District 7. And I'm proud to represent you as a deputy city attorney in court, and I'm really excited to have the chance to speak with you and to hash out the issues of our platforms. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, Noli?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me. My name is Noli Zosa. I am a small business owner. I've been a resident of the district for about 30 years, where I started my undergrad in law, in my law degree. I received my undergraduate in law degrees from the University of San Diego, and I've stayed in the community ever since. I've served the community on over 20 different boards and commissions and organizations, serving the city, the community, and our neighborhoods. I was chair of the Linda Vista Planning Group. Currently, I serve on two city boards. I represent Sarah Mesa and the rest of District 7 on the Parks and Recreation Board and the Mobility Board. During the day, I am a partner in the restaurant group called Dirty Birds, which we have five locations in San Diego, nationally recognized for having the best chicken wings in the country, and top 10 according to Yahoo! Sports and the Chicago Tribune. So, very, very proud of that. We employ, we're proud to employ up to 150 San Diegans. I've created jobs, I maintain jobs, sign the front and the back of a paycheck, and have that private sector experience that's so needed in our city governments that we're managing the finances are going to be extremely important during this post, well, hopefully, post-COVID era, when we're going to need some strong leadership in this city. I'm running because I love this city. I want to continue my 30-year public record of serving the communities and serving the city. And I just, I'm disappointed on how things are going with the city because I don't want our beautiful city to turn into Los Angeles or San Francisco. And that's where we're headed. And I'm committed to fighting for the community of Sarah Mesa and the rest of District 7, and I'm happy to be here and answer your questions.
Wonderful. Thank you. We will now go to the questions, where you'll have one minute to answer. And we'll start with Noli. First question. The city of San Diego's franchise agreement with San Diego Gas and Electric expires in January. The current proposed renewal is said to reward SDGNE/Cenpra with over $1 million in profit every single day for 20 years. What is your opinion of this offer, and what is your position on public power?
Well, we got to make sure that we do this the right way. The original agreement was for 50 years, which is, I believe, is way too long. The city needs to make sure that we're good towards protecting the taxpayers, whatever agreement that we decide to enter agreement, to whoever we decide to enter an agreement with. I know there's going to be other bidders like Berkshire Hathaway, and I'm looking forward to that bidding process. We got to make sure we do it the right way. We've learned some harsh lessons in the past few months with Ash Street, and we just can't repeat those same mistakes. We have to be forward-looking, and the fact that I'm a, that I've owned and operated four businesses and entered it into agreements, negotiated contracts, and all the play the expertise when dealing with this new franchise agreement.
Thank you. Raul?
Yeah, no, this is the least talked about, but most important at the same time issue that the city is facing that is very long-term. What we have to understand about the franchise agreement is that the consultant's report that came back to the city council suggesting what the proper bid price was and what the proper valuation of the franchise was really skewed. They essentially took the value and multiplied it times 20 and said, "That's what it's worth." That's really not the right way to go about it. Looking through that consultant's report, I noticed lots of mathematical deficiencies and realized that it wasn't as detailed. It didn't take into account inflation, rising energy costs. It didn't take into account how we're going to reach our greenhouse gas emission goals and climate action plan goals. So, I really think that the best possible thing right now might be to extend it a little bit so that the city council can do a really good job in discerning that agreement. And the mayor's office negotiates it. The city council doesn't, but we have to check their work.
Thank you. We have a lot of questions about traffic planning and development, so I'll pepper them in. Raul, I'll have you answer this question first. District 7 Councilmember Scott Sherman voted to amend the zoning in Delmar Mesa Preserve to permit the building of a large office complex. Would you, under any circumstance, see fit to vote yes to propose zoning amendments to permit either commercial or residential building upon open space city lands protected under San Diego's multiple species conservation program? Please explain your answer.
Sure. So, no, I would vote, I would not have voted on that. Our open space in San Diego is precious. Most people don't realize that Mission Trails Regional Park is the biggest urban open space park in all of California. So, we need to preserve that. It's really important for our habitat. And let's just talk really quickly for the voters about what you mentioned. The multi-species conservation program is a plan that we've had since the late '90s about preserving space for species protection, and we actually haven't funded it for almost 30 years. Those are, that's financial liabilities that the city has that aren't actually on our balance sheet. So, if we were to actually pass any sort of rezoning of that open space, the Delmar Mesa like that, you know, we are actually putting ourselves at even bigger liability. It's something that, understanding it as an attorney, we can't open ourselves up to that. Litigation is just as costly as having to pay the liability, so we need to not do that. The open spaces are going to be preserved if I'm on the city council.
Thank you. Noli?
There's nobody more committed to open space and providing parks for our families and protecting those precious habitats than me. I serve as the District 7 representative on the Parks and Recreation Board, which is in charge of making sure that we have proper facilities and make sure we have enough open space for our residents in our communities. I'm also on the Mission Trails Systems Advisory Council, which is committed to the expansion and the preservation of, like Raul said, of Mission Trails, one of our largest park spaces in, or actually the largest park space in the city. So, it is, we have to balance, I understand what we have to do. We have to provide more housing for people that can't afford to live in the city, but taking away precious open space in the city is just not the right approach to that.
Thank you. We'll take yours a little bit. We're going to start with you, Noli. Explain your position on Measure B, which would establish an independent commission on police practices.
Yeah, it's, I would vote for that. There's anything that adds to more transparency. And from my understanding, it gives the board more powers, subpoena powers, to go after misconduct by police officers. And no one, there shouldn't be any protection for police officers that engage in misconduct because an overwhelming majority of our police officers do a great job fighting for us, not fighting for our city, but keeping our neighborhood safe. And we got to rid out the bad police officers, and having the new powers of this board would be a good thing to accomplishing that.
Thank you. Raul?
Yeah, absolutely. I support Measure B, and I've had since the beginning. The key here is that it doesn't give the board more powers. It actually abolishes the board and creates an independent commission that won't be within the purview of the mayor's office. So, it won't be political appointees. It will be independent, kind of like the Ethics Commission is for the city. And it's going to include subpoena power. It's going to include its independent council. And the key issue here is, are they going to be funded completely? I think that we have to make sure that, to establish that trust with communities that feel overpoliced and feel that there have been police abuses in the past, that they are going to be funded so that they can actually pursue bad police officers. You know, as a deputy city attorney and prosecutor, I work with police officers every single day. Right now, it's in pairing up together with them to go confiscate guns from people who are threatening suicide or have serious issues of domestic violence. But I know the body cam footage that they wear and they use, and I see what works and what doesn't, and I'm excited to support Measure B.
Thank you. We'll start with you this time, Raul. What conversations do you think the community needs to have about climate change and climate action steps?
Sure. So, one of the big things is that the Climate Action Plan is first and foremost a legal document. Much like we talked about just previously with the multi-species conservation program, we actually have imposed upon our city a requirement. And if we don't meet those, there's going to be litigation to force us there. So, we actually have to live up to our end of our own bargain and actually commit to those planks. The second thing the community needs to know is, what are the planks? So, there's lots of issues. There's transferring over what's called mode share, away from driving cars and then going to public transportation. There's issues of tree cover so that we can capture carbon from the air and lower the temperature on the streets and in buildings. There's issues of methane capture from wastewater and from the dump. There's issues of zero emission vehicles. The city of San Diego hasn't switched over. So, I would want to have, I would want to communicate to everybody, you got to read the plan, got to know the planks, and see where we're behind and where people can actually help the city make, reach their goals, like mode share and using buses and trolley more often.
Thank you. Noli?
So, as your representative on the city of Sandy, the newly-created San Diego City Mobility Board, we're tasked with advising the city on how to meet the Climate Action Plan by different, on how to get to those, to get to, to meet those goals using our transportation, how to get around this city. So, the one thing I'm extremely disappointed, though, is that in the 21st century, how are we still getting rolling blackouts in this, in this, in the state and in the city? And we have to also, we have to explore other ways to achieve the goal of making sure that we are, we are, the lights don't go out. And when the wind, all the, we have to move to renewable energy sources, but we got to make sure that they are reliable. And if we have to look at other forms of ways to fuel our electricity sources, like maybe exploring nuclear options because, or not nuclear, nuclear power because that's what they do in France, and it's clean, and it doesn't produce the emissions that fossil fuels do.
Thank you. We'll take yours a little. We've got so many really good questions. Noli, I'm going to start with you for this question. What do you see as the next step for homeless housing once the convention center can be open for business?
Yeah. I'm so, you know, I see the numbers. I went and took a tour of the convention center, you know, through my restaurant. We fed all the workers at the Shelter to Home project, and I got to see the amazing things that the city is doing to house the homeless. And from my understanding, there's 550 homeless individuals have been able to get into permanent housing. But, you know, one thing that I would like to see is the conversion and the city buying city motels, which is a lot less expensive than what this housing bond that my opponent supports, that the city of Los Angeles has a similar housing bond, and it costs $533,000 per unit to build. That's not the right way to get people, to get homeless people off the streets, but exploring like a container, shipping containers as housing, modular, module housing, other options besides funding, continuing subsidized, affordable housing.
Thank you. Raul?
Sure. So, let's just be real clear. In LA, it costs that much. In San Diego, it's about 25% cheaper. It's just more expensive to build in Los Angeles County. The real solution here is, and I'm sad to see that the county board of supervisors failed to buy another hotel in San Diego to transition people to a more stable form of housing rather than shelters. They turned it down, even though the state of California was going to fund it for us. Really makes no sense why they would, why they did that. You know, Nathan Fletcher wanted it to pass, but his colleagues got in his way, even though we've done that already at this point in the pandemic to help people transition. It is cheaper to use existing pieces of land and existing buildings. What might be a good use is, as we see people are just as productive during COVID from home, if not more productive from some data that I've seen, we could transition office space that exists right now throughout the city into housing. We just got to get some permit issues out of the way. But if we could use existing buildings with a little bit of retrofitting, we'll be, we'll have a good solution right there.
Thank you. I'm going to go back to one of those planning and development type questions. And Raul, we'll start with you. Sarah Mesa has many vacant lots owned by one owner. These lots have been vacant for more than a decade. What will you do to work with this owner to build some improvements to enhance the community?
Sure. So, I mean, right now, we're talking about the guild, right? So, these vacant lots really need to be transformed into things like a new grocery store. They need to be transitioned into a new public park. And, you know, I know that Sarah Mesa has some, many elementary schools and quality middle schools, but frankly, we could use another school just to be able to have people be able to walk to school a little bit easier. So, I really think that the hard part about this is that private property is private property. You can't, we can't condemn it. We can't use eminent domain to force him to give it up, but the city can bargain with him. The city can try to figure out ways to incentivize this person to build. And it really does come down to that. Landowners, for obvious reasons and for good reasons, have control over their land, but it's really not something that the city of San Diego can move in and say, "Hey, this is our land, or we want this to be ours for our purposes, and we're taking it away from you." Just got to form a good partnership with the owner and get it done.
Thank you. Noli?
Yeah, there's certain things that the city can do. They can, they can offer tax credits and tax incentives for private companies to go in there and use that space. It is, there's so many different uses. It could be some of the uses that Raul was talking about, a school or a grocery store. It's, you know, Sarah Mesa's is also a food desert, just like Linda Vista is. So, but, you know, working with, one thing that, coming from the business community, I'm a still big believer on public-private partnerships and working with the business community and the city to get things done. And I know we can do it using, and I've experienced it in Linda Vista, working with institutions like the University of San Diego. I work very closely with their school of business and their school of real estate to work with the communities to get things done and to work with business owners, especially minority business owners, and advise them on how to operate their businesses and make their businesses more successful. So, I'm looking to work for it with institutions in the city and businesses to get those lots occupied.
Thank you. And Noli, we're going to start with you with the next question. You mentioned food deserts, so I jumped to this. More than 1 million San Diego County residents are currently experiencing food insecurity, according to the San Diego Hunger Coalition. If elected, what types of policies would you support and actions will you take to create a hunger-free San Diego?
Well, yeah, it's, you know, the San Diego Food Bank does great work. But really, like with, with my business, I'm in the food business, you know? I own four, me and my partners own five restaurants, and we are very generous with the food that we give away. We started a project called Wingy it Forward, where we fed all our local responders and hospitals during, the people that are taking care of us during this pandemic. And we'll do the same thing. We were stepping up our restaurant community. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a member of the California Restaurant Association, and we are very generous and very community-oriented to make sure that we are, we are part of the solution. And I'm, we are, we have to be part of that solution. Again, there's, there's great philanthropic companies in this city, and getting the business community involved is essential to solving food insecurity in the city.
Thank you. Raul?
Sure. So, the answer is, how do we, the question is, how do we make it, make fewer food deserts and combat food insecurity? The key is to set aside key aspects or key parcels of land that are within walking distance or within quick public transportation distance of residents who are low income or middle income. Unfortunately, most of that is concentrated in the southern part of San Diego. And so, I'm going to align and listen to Councilwoman Montgomery, Councilwoman Moreno, and whoever succeeds Councilwoman, Council President Gomez, to figure out where exactly we need to put these and where, and how we're going to do it appropriately. The other aspect is that, you know, we can't rely on charity to meet this. We have to really emphasize setting aside land and then really pushing to have, to make sure that when we sell that land, it is for grocery, and they hold up their end of the bargain. It's got to be contractual.
Thank you. Noli?
I answered, I started.
I was trying to fix my video, and then I got myself. Oh, this next question is for you. What is your plan to mitigate increased traffic and parking problems for residents on Sarah Mesa streets that will result from the SDSU Mission Valley Project, both during construction and after full completion?
Sure. So, the key here is, the folks that are going to be going, you know, it's, they're going up and down from where current Qualcomm Stadium is. The aspect that has to be met first is holding SDSU West accountable for the infrastructure improvements before they start bringing in students and bringing the Aztecs back from Carson. Well, they need to build the bridge that was supposed to span behind the IKEA and cross the river. That was part of the community plan almost 30 years ago, and it never got built by Fenton and not, never was pushed by the city, but it's been in the plan. So, really, it's up to us to hold SDSU West accountable there. Another aspect is, you know, I hear from a lot of folks how the, just purely, the streets themselves need to be repaired, and then going up and down the hill on the, on the east side of Sarah Mesa, the two lanes, people fly down those lanes, even though many people who live on it have to back up into it. We got to figure out a safer way, maybe some roundabouts, so that it will slow down and be safer for people because public safety is really a key aspect of that traffic aspect.
Thank you. Noli?
Yeah, there's different ways, like Raul said, holding SDSU West accountable for the infrastructure improvements, but encouraging the SDSU faculty and staff and students to use the trolley, which goes right through from San Diego State Campus right into SDSU West. Sometimes moms mandating it, to make sure that they're, they're not using their cars to come in and out of SDSU West when it gets built. One of the problems is going to be the parking. And so, I was on the Parking Advisory Board for the city of San Diego. That was the first board that I served with the city. And I came up with the idea of being able to, for people to park in front of their own driveways. I was an administrative hearing officer for the city of San Diego hearing parking citation appeals for nine years. And it never, I never understood why people can park in front of their own driveways. And so, I'm advancing this initiative right through the city, it's being tried in Uptown, where people can park in front of their own driveways as long as they display a permit proving that their car is registered to their, to that address. So, that will, has the potential to create tens of thousands of parking spaces in Sarah Mesa and all impacted areas in San Diego.
Thank you. And now, we'll start with you, Noli, but this one will be a fairly easy question, I think, for both of you. Are you willing to attend an annual Sarah Mesa Community Council meeting and address the community?
I will, and I have. I've, I've attended several of the community council meetings when I wasn't, when I wasn't running. It was, it's something that I've been involved with for years. And people that have attended Sarah Mesa Community Council's meetings have seen me at these meetings, and I've introduced myself and, and introduced myself as a chairman of the Linda Vista Planning Group. And it was my job the last, you know, god, decades to get to know the communities that I, that I hope to represent. So, that's why I'm just, I've been just so committed to serving the city and serving these communities and serving Sarah Mesa, and I'm not a new face to the communities in District 7. I've served the community and the neighborhoods for so, so long, and I promise and pledge to do that and be accountable and available to people's requests and their concerns.
Thank you. Raul?
Yes.
Thank you. Raul, we'll start with you for the next question. What is your opinion on joint-use projects and how to maintain them? The questioner noted poor maintenance on Wega Fourth and Andeer and is concerned about the upcoming Taft Joint Use Project.
Sure. So, we can't continue to rely on joint-use projects. You know, Wega Fourth Elementary being paired together with the Sarah Mesa Recreation Center. The fundamental problem with that is that when people frequent that with their pets and aren't responsible, now we have students who are playing or... or interacting with the same environment that someone was allowing their pet to, you know, leave their waste there. So it's really a health hazard. I, I really think that it's, especially given how District Seven has canyon space. We have a lot of lots. We talked about the lots earlier. Making those into parks would be good. And one thing that both me and Noli have been, you know, researching and talking with people across District Seven is how we're going to have an off-leash dog park. It's something that everybody knows we really need. There's different locations, but Sarah Mesa can't continue to rely on the schools being just joint use parks anymore.
Thank you. Noli?
Yeah, serving on the Parks Recreation Board for, which I do now. We've, I've been on the board for about four years and we continue to open more joint use fields with, with our schools. And overall, I think it's been a generally good thing for our communities because we, we don't, we have limited space, we have limited park space. And that is a concern with, with dogs and people walking the dogs and using those, these joint fields as off-leash dog parks. I, together with Beyond Leashes, we're building, identified a location in, on Lake Murray that's going to be a dog park. So hopefully the residents in Sarah Mesa and the rest of District Seven will use this dog park instead of using these joint fields as off-leash dog parks. So that's something that I'm working on now. It is, it's going to take some time to accomplish, but I got, together with Beyond Leashes, we, we're going to get this done. And if you elect me a city councilman, I will get it done quicker.
Thank you. And for this next question, Noli, we'll start with you. What steps would you take to increase employment in San Diego, given the big increase due to COVID?
Yeah. As a job creator is, you know, I'm in, my restaurants have been so affected. There's nobody that has been more impacted than people in my industry, the restaurant industry. It was a heartbreaking decision to lay off or inferlo 100 of our employees. But luckily, the city can make, is made some good decisions, like opening up our, our patios and using public spaces, outdoor dining areas. But really making sure that we remove the regulations and just handcuffing businesses. And it's so, that's one of the reasons why I'm running, because it's so hard to do business in the city and the state. Opening up restaurants and maintaining a small business, I have four small businesses. And just continuing, trying to continue to do business in the city has been harder and harder. So that's why we need a person that is a small business owner and city council that knows how to create jobs, knows how to maintain jobs, that's sign the front of, back of a paycheck and, and has the contacts in the business community to get things done.
Thank you. Raul?
Sure, so I definitely appreciate the restaurant industry, what it provides to every community and especially San Diego. It's, it's aspect, one of the key aspects is the tourism that it brings and the tax revenue that it brings. But at its core, we can't expect service industry jobs to meet the needs of increasing costs. Especially when, you know, when the Restaurant Association fights back against minimum wage increases in San Diego. It's very difficult to afford. And I know it puts a little bit more stress on small businesses. But there's exemptions where if you have a smaller business, you're allowed to pay a dollar less to try to ameliorate that. What we have to do is actually expand the employment base, not so much on service, but into manufacturing. You know, we have a, we are an international city with bi-national relations in Tijuana. We really need to focus on shipping, we need to focus on manufacturing, those are long, and, and, and construction. Those are long-term jobs that pay better than minimum wage. That's how you deal with unemployment.
Thank you. Raul, we'll start with you for the next question. Discuss any plan you have for resolving the local housing shortage and affordability issue. What changes, if any, would you suggest to single-family zoning?
Sure, so housing affordability, the key aspect is to first, well, you have to cut the cost. And the key way to cut the cost is to remove red tape in City Hall where you have to jump through several offices before you get your permits. Ask any developer this, they will tell you. They lose more money waiting for a permit because the return on investment for the, over time, goes down as they have to wait to build. They need to build it and then get a person to move into it. So what we have to do is make it quicker to be able to build buildings, build housing that meets certain specifications. So let's do that, that'll lower the cost and increase the affordability. The other aspect of that is putting it closer to job centers and building it in places like Mission Valley, where we have a lot of empty parking lots where they're closer to, to the transit lines, because then developers get what's called a density bonus. And so they can build more units there, which allows them to make their profitability and drive the cost down.
Thank you. Noli?
Yeah, what the city is lacking right now is workforce housing. For housing that's affordable, that's not subsidized housing, but those, the housing for our nurses, our, our police officers and our firefighters, that's what's missing. And also for our educators, I'm, one of the ideas that, that I'm for is let's, let's look at the property that's owned by the school district and by the city. And why, and there's some, there's some big lots that are owned by the city and the school district so that we can build housing, why not build housing for, for staff and faculty for schools? And that would, one of the biggest costs of housing is the cost of the land. And that would absolutely reduce the cost of, of the overall cost of housing if we can build on these, on these properties. But also we have to make the city understand that time is money. I don't think development services understands that, that not only do developers lose out, but the city loses out. If we can't hurry these projects along but do it the right way, obviously not skip all the steps. But make, get them to understand that we've got to make sure that, cut the red tape and get these projects done so we can help solve this housing crisis that we're in right now.
Thank you. I know I keep freezing. Am I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Noli, I'm going to give you the next question. What would you do to improve Mission Village? The questioner would like to see Mission Village Drive better maintained.
Mission Village? Well, what's missing in Mission Village? I mean, it's, it's, uh, yeah, can you be more specific on what can be improved? What, I'm not familiar with the particular area that you're talking about.
The east side is the reason.
Well, I would like to see a senior center. One thing that Sarah Mesa is missing is a senior center. We have an older population in Sarah Mesa and that's one thing that's really, really needed in, in Sarah Mesa is a senior center. When I've, when I've talked to the residents of Sarah Mesa, I would look for grants and, and from public and private grants to make sure that a senior center is funded because it is absolutely needed in, in the community of Sarah Mesa. And I would help to accomplish that.
Thank you. Raul?
Sure, so as I mentioned earlier, with the traffic from SDSU West going up and down Mission Village Drive, you know, the key aspect there is really the public safety of people going up and down that hill when they have to. And then people who live with their, the front of their house right along the drive pulling out, and they can't necessarily see. Anybody who's driven up that hill and goes past Rhonda and goes past Fullerton knows that, you know, if a car's coming real fast, it's going to be dangerous. So, and it's just as equally dangerous for the people going down the hill, right? Because they're picking up speed. So that's a good spot to put a roundabout, slow people down for public safety. But the other aspect is that median really needs to be maintained well. A key aspect of that is making sure the city's office that's dedicated to that, which is Parks and Recreation, goes through and maintains it. You know, Parks and Recreation is always one of the first parts of the budget cut, Noli will tell you that. Because maintenance is considered low priority and I don't think it's low priority. It's a, it's a public safety hazard, it's about beautification. So that's how I would improve Mission Village Drive.
Thank you. And Raul, I'll give you this next question first. What will be your process for community outreach?
My process for community outreach starts with staff. You know, I'm aiming to hire staff that live in District Seven or have lived in District Seven, grew up in District Seven because they know the community well. That's, that's just the first aspect. Because a person who knows the neighborhood and loves the neighborhood, still has their family in the neighborhood, is just going to know the issues better to begin with, know where to go look for the people who are having struggles. The other aspect of it is that, and anybody will tell you, you know, anytime I text with someone, anytime I email someone, my personal cell phone number is on there. You know, I'm, I'm an open book kind of guy. And that's, I, you know, I don't put a Google phone to patch through. And that's just the, that's just the way I operate. And then the last thing I'd say is, you know, continuing to walk door-to-door as soon as COVID settles down, of course, is going to be a key aspect because it shouldn't just be City Hall the whole time, it should be out in the community.
Thank you. Noli?
Yeah, I, I'm the epitome of outreach. I, I'm involved in, like I said, over 20 different community groups where I am a huge advocate to making sure that neighborhoods and our residents have a voice. I've been, I've been chairman of the Linda Vista Planning Group for six years. I've been, talk about being accessible, I'm president of my homeowners association. And you walk outside your front door, people have an opinion, you can't hide from your, from your neighbors. And they're always have a say and they know that I'm running for city council and they, they make sure that they want to know. They, they let me know what their, what their primary concerns are with the city and the community and everything else. So I've shown that, I have a record of being accessible. But one thing that is, is lacking is on these community boards, they need to be more representative. Most of the people on the community boards, they're, they're mostly homeowners and a lot of retirees. But we need to get more renters, younger, younger people, more minorities on, on these community boards. And I'm committed to that. But I'll, like I said, I'm committed to being accessible if I'm elected city council member.
Thank you. Noli, I'll start with you for this question. Do you think the strong mayor form of leadership is effective for San Diego? Please explain your answer.
Well, it's, it's going to be, right now, if we, we're going to have a Democratic mayor and a Democratic supermajority on city councils. So if we don't have a balance on city government, and that's why it was endorsed by the Union Tribune in the, back in February in the primaries, because a balance of interest makes for good governance. And that was one of the reasons why I was endorsed by the Union Tribune in the primary. But right now, there, there is, the mayor does, if we don't have, if you don't, if I'm not elected, there's going to be very little resistance and everybody's going to act in uniform. It doesn't matter, there's going to be a strong form, a former mayor in the city. Because the city council is going to rubber stamp everything that the city, that the mayor is going to, wants to push forward. And so, you know, the veto power the mayor does, it's all going to be, it's going to be meaningless if you don't have people like me that will balance out that city council. That's going to be a voice for small business and for our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Raul?
Sure, well, let's just quickly start off with the partisanship issue. San Diego has had Republicans who support gay rights and it's had Democrats who support the military. It's, it's, it's had people who really care about the community and about standing up for our values as, as a city. And really has, for the large part, put aside partisanship. So I, I don't know what historical evidence there is that in San Diego, Democrats or Republicans rubber stamp anything that the mayor puts on. Part of that is because districts, the district system and because of the diversity of the districts, the counselors try to take care of their constituents. So I'm never going to rubber stamp anybody's anything. I'm going to make sure that the deal is good for District Seven. The other aspect of that too is that, you know, if, if you have a city councilor who's in the majority, you're more likely to have the leverage to negotiate to bring back better services and better improvements to the district. So I'll be on the side that isn't being ignored by the majority.
Thank you. Raul, we'll, we'll start with you for this next question. It's pretty specific. Will you support the finding a vendor or becoming its own vendor at Montgomery Gibbs Executive Airport to offer FAA-certified unleaded general aviation fuel alongside toxic leaded ab gas, which only a minority of small planes need to use for safety? Would you actively ban leaded fuel, which is linked to cognitive and behavioral problems?
Sure, so let's just start off with that ban part first. I think that we have to move towards the ban. And part of that is because, and I've seen this, when I was a teacher, I saw children, students of mine who were actually affected by lead in their environment and the developmental deficiencies that it caused. It's a real serious thing, it's, it's happening and we need to make sure that it's not affecting Sarah Mesa that way. Then, now let's just, and it requires federal approval, a federal approval. We really got to push Scott Peters, our congressman, who, to, to get on the FAA for that. And that's where he can be helpful on that, because the city can't really push that, but we should support it. Let, let's just really talk quickly about what you brought up, which was, it was the FAA Compliance Manual, which exists and it's, I believe it's chapter eight of the compliance manual. Because you asked us this question in January and I wanted to understand exactly what we're allowed to do. The city can provide its own unleaded fuel, can provide. So we should provide there, we may offer it. It's, it's not a mandatory thing and it doesn't keep us out. So I say, why not do it so that we can make sure the fuel is unleaded, get that lead out of our air?
Thank you. Noli?
Yeah, one of the meetings that I attended at the Sarah Mesa Community Council, it was, it was actually specifically addressing the, the leaded fuel issue on Montgomery Field. And it's a very, very heated issue. Actually, a physical fight broke out during, during that meeting because of, you know, a pilot that showed up that was, that was against this. And, and residents that were absolutely against the leaded fuel. But yeah, I would, I would support a ban on leaded fuel. I don't, I'm not an expert on, on fuels, but we use unleaded fuel in our vehicles. We don't have leaded fuel, so why are we continuing to use it in our planes? But it is a federal issue, but I would support. You know, it seems like the city council, our local city council are, are, are making statements and, and about federal issues. And this is one of them where, before making a, a, a statement from the city council.
Thank you. So Noli, we're getting some new questions in. I'm going to start with you with this one. With respect to the question about the franchise agreement, we do not hear about public power. Will you take a meaningful look at a transition to municipalized public utility, such as those in cities of Los Angeles, Alameda, and right here in Escondido? That provides lower-cost energy to ratepayers and empowers our city to take control over the move to removable energy production?
Well, I would say be very, very careful and if we enter into anything into the unknown. And make sure that we, we don't want to rush with, with anything that's going to change our reliable energy sources. It may sound good, everything sounds good in the beginning as, as a business, as a businessman, that entering into any future ventures, there's always the fear of the unknown because everything looks good from the beginning. But when I've entered into business transactions, I'm always looking two, three, four, five steps ahead because when things go bad. And I, and that's one thing that the city has failed to do. And you've seen that and we're, we're paying the price now. But the fact that I have that experience and I'm always thinking of the worst-case scenario when things go bad. Because I've made some good investments, mostly good investments, and I've made one bad investment. I learned a lot of lessons from that. And I'll apply those lessons when, when reviewing these contracts or these future agreements that the city's going to enter into.
Thank you. Raul?
Sure, so anything dealing with the city's authority should be looked into seriously. You know, but this is really something that comes down the road. You know, there, there's issues with the LADWP, Department of Water, and, and Public Utilities. But then you see really good examples like Sacramento, where they have experts running their public utility for energy, saving a lot of money, but it took years of litigation to actually get there, which costs so much more money upfront. So I, I think I've brought this up probably three or four times at this point. When you analyze a plan, you got to say, is it legal, who's going to stand against it? And who can be our supporters in it so that we can get all the players on board? So public power is, has a place in the conversation. I don't think we're quite ready for it, but it's something that is a long-term prospect. And, you know, that's, that's really where I look at it. And we have good examples and bad examples of how it works.
Thank you. Raul, we'll start with you for the next question. Many Sarah Masons are strongly opposed to the proposed road connection from Sevita to Phyllis Place. Many Sarah Masons are strongly opposed to the proposed road connection from Sevita to Phyllis Place. The S M C C and S M P G are on record as opposed also. Groups from Sarah Mesa and Sevita are pursuing legal action to prevent that road from happening. What is your position on that issue? And will you work to prevent the road connection from happening?
Sure. So I've heard a lot from the people who live off Phyllis, uh, and, and why they're against it. And I understand it from a public safety perspective. You know, uh, it's, it's something that I learned about first by walking the community back in the primary. We're not knocking doors right now because of COVID. But we are hearing people talk about it on the phone. I think it's, it's really important to know where that project's come from, uh, and where, who, who's really supporting it. You know, uh, council member Scott Sherman supported, supported it, uh, supported the community plan update. I know that Noli wrote a letter to the city council back in August of 2017, supporting it. And I think that, uh, really you got to listen to the community members there. I mean, both sides of, of the issue are saying, please, please don't build this road. Find an alternative as best we can, but listen to the community there. That's really what I'm about. And, uh, you know, that, that's just where I stand.
Thank you. Noli?
Yeah, so the, um, the road is very controversial. I've listened to many Sevita homeowners and, and, uh, people that live residents of Sarah Mesa, and they do have valid concerns, mostly about speed and safety and pollution. Where, where cars, it's going to add, uh, more daily trips right through the middle of Sevita. So those are very, very valid concerns. And anyway, any way we can mitigate those impacts that this road can do, um, we need to do. But it, uh, it, I'm hoping that it will, um, lessen, it'll connect at eight oh five to Friar's Road. And I understand why the city was in the, it was in the, uh, plan, the city's plan decades ago. But whatever the city can do, whatever I can do to mitigate the very valid concerns that, uh, people in Sevita and Sarah Mesa residents have, I'm committed to doing. And I'll work with the community to, uh, but this was decided and I'd like to see how the, the lawsuits, uh, um, you know, pan out and help the communities in any way I can.
Thank you. Noli, we're going to start with you for this next question. So it looks like, um, there's a couple, they're senior citizens and they live in Sarah Mesa and they, they like to walk around their area. However, so many of the sidewalks are raised and or uneven, posing a danger to them. And they're afraid of falling. As a city council member, what can you do to improve this situation?
Well, this, in the city, it's, it's weird because the, the city is responsible for any liability that results out of someone tripping and falling and it's costing the city millions of dollars in, in lawsuits. But the, the city puts it on the homeowner or the, the property owner in front of that sidewalk to maintain that sidewalk. It just doesn't make sense. And that's one of the things that, how I don't understand how the city, uh, uh, operates. And, um, I will, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's, uh, making sure that we fund, uh, the infrastructure. The developers, if, if they're building projects, um, hopefully make it, well, ensuring that they are responsible for these improvements, including the sidewalks, not only the roads, but the sidewalks that they use. So, um, but also just making sure that our streets and our sidewalks are funded. And one thing that I'm against is I'd rather fund these sidewalks and not protected bike lanes. I've been a very vocal advocate in not spending $279 million on, on protected bike lanes. I think that should be spent on sidewalks and roads. And Raul is going to say that, uh, that's already been allocated, but it's not. It's been allocated, but it hasn't been fully funded yet. So I sit on mobility board and that's, uh, and we ask that specific question.
Thank you. Raul?
Noli's right. That's what I was going to say. The problem is, is that, uh, that's in the realm of Sandag, where city council only has two seats representative with all the other municipalities. And we really can't, uh, go back on that agreement with our other cities and, uh, break that trust. You know, it's decided before me and Noli and neither of us are going to be able to have a role in that. But I, anyway, um, the, the key is really to change the ordinance that says it's on the homeowner to contribute to their own improvement of a public walkway. It, it's as simple as that. Pass an ordinance, get it done. And quite frankly, uh, wherever we see a broken sidewalk, together with, uh, a pothole, together with, uh, electricity pole, that's got to be reprioritized into a grounding of electric, electrical wires. Anybody who's walked through Sarah Mesa like I have is going to tell you, the electrical wires need to be grounded. You got left behind. You know, a lot of other neighborhoods didn't. You got to catch up.
Thank you. Raul, we'll start with you for this question. What distinguishes you from your opponent?
Uh, I think, well, we're going to be charitable, right, Noli? No, it's funny. Me and Noli actually get along, uh, whenever we cross paths in the primary. You know, we have similar backgrounds and, and, and are in similar families. And so, um, you know, really it comes down to, uh, an ethic of what government is really about. You know, I joined the city government because I thought to myself, get involved right now, uh, and at a young age, and really put in the hours at work as, and now as a prosecutor. A part of that was driven by the fact that my brother died a few, uh, few years ago, six years ago now, from an opioid overdose. And I see, you see so many people getting involved in the criminal justice system because of drug addiction issues that I wanted to go in there and help them, help their families figure out the right path to therapy and, uh, in sessions rather than, uh, incarceration. And so really, I, I come from a, this personal perspective of how I'm going to help people like that. And I did it at a young age, uh, straight, direct with the city.
Thank you. Noli?
Biggest thing is experience. See experience as someone that's had experience in the private sector, that's maintained and created jobs. As someone that is, uh, that has dealt with, um, investments and, uh, because managing finances. I've been president of the homeowners association, which I've, it's acts as a mini city council, where I turned, um, a budget that was forty thousand in debt. And when I came in and they actually, it was so bad that they turned off the water. So six straight years of, of, um, of budget surpluses with a ninety percent funding of our reserves funded and a hundred fifty thousand dollars of improvements to our common areas. But also community involvement. Um, I, like I said, I've been involved in twenty different boards and commissions and organizations, serving the communities, which I'm so passionate about serving the residents. This is not about politics for me. It's not about serving political parties. I, I don't get involved in political, you know, the, and, and political campaigns. And, uh, I was, I was spending my time serving the community, getting on different boards and commissions and, uh, serving the neighborhoods. And that's what I've been doing and I want to continue that. That's the biggest difference.
Thank you. So Noli, we're going to start with you. I know we talked about a lot of issues in District Seven, but what would you say the biggest problems are in District Seven? And how would you address them?
Yeah, uh, you know, when I'm going around, it's, each neighborhood is so particular, is so different in, in, uh, it's such a vast, and representative of all of San Diego. In Linda Vista, it's affordable housing. We need more affordable housing in Linda Vista. We're a working class community. And Sarah Mesa, it's, it's, uh, the streets and it's the impact that SCSU West is going to have. It is, um, the services for our seniors. In, in, in Mission Valley, it is, um, the road, it's the, um, the density and the traffic that's going to be generated. And the Navajo communities, it's government services. It's, it's, it's streets. It's, it's, uh, it's those core services that the city, um, has to do for its citizens. And Tirasana, they just want to be left alone and have them save neighborhoods to raise their families. So, um, it just depends on the neighborhood that, uh, that we're talking about. And I'm, I'm happy to represent it. And I've gotten to know all the different communities and intimately know what each community needs, because I've been serving this community, these communities for so long.
Thank you. Raul?
Sure. So, um, the, the key, key issues are for everybody, uh, even up in Tirasana, are housing affordability and homelessness, the two aspects that go together hand in hand. It's a San Diego issue. It's a California issue. It's a national issue. It's even an international issue. So really being committed to what affordable housing looks like. Affordable housing doesn't mean letting the developers run wild and building all the housing that they want. Because supply side economics is not the, is not how we're going to deal with this. We have to have some restrictions and where we put it, but at the same time, we have to create affordability, uh, through ordinance and through set asides that have existed and are constitutional and have been in pretty much every city. So, uh, really it comes down to that. You know, and, and frankly, just Tirasana also has a lot of break-ins. Uh, police can't get up there very fast. It's difficult to get up there from Eastern District. I don't want Tirasana to be left behind just because, you know, they are the jewel in the hill, but they have serious problems, including after one part of Linda Vista, the second poorest, uh, census tract in District Seven. Most people don't know that.
Thank you. Raul, we'll start with you for the next question. What priorities would you use to make decisions about road improvement and other infrastructure needs, given the budget reductions due to COVID-19?
I'm sorry, did, did you say what, what are the priority?
What priorities would you use to make decisions about road improvement and other infrastructure needs, given the budget reductions due to COVID-19?
Oh, sure. Okay. Uh, this is actually a pretty easy one because, uh, what anyone will tell you, and Sarah Mesa especially, is that they'll underground the wires, but they won't repave the road correctly and they won't fix the sidewalk or they'll do one and not the other. The way to do this is all in one fell swoop altogether. And on top of that, that includes repairing the wastewater system that's under our roads. It gets, it doesn't get mentioned enough. We have hundreds of millions of dollars in liability, even close to a billion throughout the entire city. Because, and our pipes are ready to burst at cer, at a certain point, you know, the, uh, trade workers for the city, Ask Me 127. They've endorsed me and what they tell me is we are holding on by the skin of our teeth on our wastewater pipes. So we actually have to fix wastewater together with repaving and resurfacing the road, together with laying down new sidewalk and bringing the wires down to, uh, for safety and beautification all at once. You can do four projects at once. Anybody will tell you, you're going to get that cost far lower. It just takes planning.
Thank you. Noli?
Yeah, making sure that we, um, it's, you're absolutely right. And we're, our budget is going to look really, really bad. It's going to be worse than two thousand eight, uh, post-two thousand eight. And we're going to have to make sure that we rebuild our, our tax base and making sure that our businesses return, our small businesses return. One thing that this pandemic has showed is that small business owners like myself are the major engine, there's the major engine that drives our San Diego economy. So all these programs and all these ideas are great, but if we can't get things to, if we can't get these businesses to, in our tax base, uh, back to where it is, none of these ideas matter. But with these, uh, but it also has to do with any projects that are going in to make sure that we hold developers accountable for, uh, infrastructure improvements. Making sure that, uh, the DIF fees that are, get paid into the community are used for these improvements.
Thank you. Noli, we'll start with you. It's kind of a similar topic. What will be your, what will your budget consist of due to the revenue losses from COVID-19?
Yeah, so the way we got to look at the budget, it's not just about trimming here and there. We got to look at what our priorities are, which is our, which is the infrastructure and protecting the public safety. And let's work our way down from there. Because we can, you know, the, the city government, government never has enough money to fund everything. But we got to make sure, what are our priorities and make sure that those are funded and work our way down from there. Because, um, but we, but like I said, we have to make sure that we rebuild our tax base because our hotels are suffering and not, uh, contributing T O T taxes to the city. And businesses like mine are hurting and we're not contributing to sales taxes to the city, which is hurting our, which, which is, which is going to lead to cuts in all government programs. And I don't want to cut any, our city of employees or hardworking city employees or eleven thousand city employees. But it's about funding and making sure that we rebuild our revenues to make sure that we, we, uh, we can fund everything in the city and, and working from our top priorities down.
Thank you. Raul?
Sure. So the top priority is preventing the spread of COVID, hands down. Because our economy isn't just in shambles for no reason. It's because of the virus. So the city's top priority has to be the health and protection of people from the spread of COVID, because otherwise nothing's going to rebound. And the way you actually implement that is, uh, every year, city councilors, all nine, have to write what's called a, uh, budget priority memo. I've already started thinking about what's going to go in mind. First, to prevent the spread of COVID while also helping small businesses is to reef, re, uh, up rental assistance for people who are hanging by a thread. Because if they aren't allowed to stay in their homes and they are out elsewhere, that's going to be spreading COVID. Small businesses, if they close, again, that's going to have a, an extra effect on their workers, who then are going to be in a position where they can't make ends meet. And then they're going to have to rely on rental assistance. So I, I, first and foremost, we got to protect the people from COVID and then everything flows from that.
Thank you. Raul, we'll start with you with the next question. As city councillor, if a community group were to discuss an issue with you, what would you need from the community group to help in your decision-making?
Sure. Uh, I, I mean, this happens already right now, whether in, in multiple endorsement interviews or, or just us chatting with people. What, what I need to know, uh, what can be helpful to me is really a position paper backed by data. It really comes down to data-driven responses, uh, to our problems. Because if we, you know, and those are based on principle too. But fundamentally, if the data isn't there to support it, uh, I'm not going to be able to find the way to fund it. I'm not going to be able to find, uh, the way to really, uh, you know, make it, uh, justifiable when I'm negotiating against, uh, or rather with, against, depending on what the position is, the mayor's office, uh, or with, uh, seven, eight other city council members. So, uh, a data, a, a data-based paper, a data-based argument is what I really need. And, uh, in, you know, also I'd say contacts with the experts that they rely on so that I can go dig for myself, uh, into what they're trying to argue with me. Uh, but I have an open door and I give people my personal cellphone.
Thank you. Noli?
Yeah, I want to make sure that all sides are represented, are represented, excuse me. And I get a representative view of the community. And that's sometimes, that's not always the case where, uh, there are strong. One thing I've learned getting involved in communities is that there are those, these commu, the community elders that, um, that like, that speak for the community. And those people are very respected. I, I, I work with a lot of them on the community planners committee. But also we, like I said, we have to make sure that all voices in communities are heard. And opposing viewpoints are heard. But one thing that I have pledged is that to make sure that, to sit down with all groups, even groups that, uh, that aren't necessarily on my side, or whether it be labor unions or, or, you know, any other group that traditionally, um, are not supportive of the business community. But I will listen to you and I will, um, make sure that I hear you. And if I disagree with you, I will let you know, uh, why I disagree with you and let's talk it out. And I will not tell you something, I'm going to be on your side and then go before city council and do the opposite. That's one thing I won't do and that's not something that's respected by people. And, uh, and I've told, when I've went before, uh, some labor unions seeking their endorsement, I said, you know what? I'm not going to agree with you on everything, but I pledge to you that I'll be honest with you.
Thank you. Noli, we're going to start with you with this next question. It's similar. The city's planning groups who make recommendations to the city council have received criticism for lack of transparency and representation. What is your view of the role of the planning group and what revisions would you make?
Yeah, uh, so, uh, like I said, I've been, uh, chairman of the Linda Vista Planning Group for six years. And I'm very proud of the group. We try to be as representative. I mean, we're not a hundred percent representative, but I'm proud that we have young people. We have minorities. We have renters. And, um, we try to be representative of the communities because, uh, we are an advisory group to the city. And we hope that the city takes our advice seriously. And, um, because if they're not representative, um, there's no reason for them to, to listen to us and it will be, and our advice disregarded. But, um, there has to be that outreach to, um, to different groups. You know, the university in Linda Vista, you know, we, we want students, we try to act to, to get students, involve staff, faculty involved in our, in our planning group. But that's, that's the thing, um, is people have to, we have to schedule the times of the meetings and, um, the locations that are accessible to make sure that people can attend these meetings and get involved in these, in the, in these meetings. And I've been actively involved in trying to, in, in that outreach, to get into outreach to other people that aren't necessarily traditionally, uh, involved in these groups.
Thank you. Raul?
Yeah, no, the, the planning groups are really important and are, are sort of the first line of, of, uh, of contact with how we're going to develop and how we're going to build and repair neighborhoods. The key aspect here is you ask what revisions? So let's get really So let's get really specific here. Certain planning groups meet at the most difficult times. And part of that is because they're planned by developers who sit on them. It's part of their workday to show up. And in a lot of these community planning groups, you have to show up to four, five, six meetings in a row, depending on which one you're at, so that you can actually have a voice and run to be on the panel and to be able to even vote in it. So what we have to do is say, hey, you can't be, you can't be meeting on a random Wednesday afternoon. Mission Valley Planning Group meets on Wednesday, the first Wednesday of the month, from twelve until whatever time they stop. Nobody can really make that. No working person can make that. It's passed an ordinance that says you got to meet on the weekend so that working families can show up. And they can be more democratized by not having people have to show up to four, five, six before they have a voice on it.
Thank you. Raul, the next question, we'll start with you. Would you support changing the charter to stop the city from selling off city-owned land? Please explain.
Would I support changing the city charter to sell city-owned land? I do not think that that is the right way to go. It's, and it depends which kind of land. But fundamentally, for example, like I said earlier, open space, protected. If we don't, if we sell it off and another person has rights over it, we're not going to be able to control it. But the city-owned land can be a useful tool for helping us bring in money when it increases in great value or when there's a really smart plan that an outside investor wants to use it for. Why would we handcuff ourselves on that? Let's own it. Let's, let's make a list of all that we have. I know that Noli's brought this up before. You know, making sure we have a full audit of what we own and what its value is. And then fundamentally, using it strategically. I don't think we should have a charter amendment that prevents us from using another tool that could be really smart usage for land. You know, I, I can't think of another city that has that. And, you know, if someone gives us a really great offer on something and it has the right contractual obligations and protections in it, that'll be fine.
Thank you. Noli?
Yeah, I was involved in a, a similar, you know, what you're talking about with Skate World property that's owned by the city and leased to Skate World. And what they were going to do is they were going to turn it into a target, which me and other community members got involved in fighting the city to preserve that piece of property. Because what, what we did is it needed to be the highest, the city, the state documents say there needs to be, what's the highest and best use of this property? And it wasn't, a target was not the, the best and highest best use of the property. And so we fought the city and preserved Skate World for now. When everything was going against us, I had, I had to go against Scott Sherman on this and the mayor and, and the other colleagues that are on my side. But this is the independent leadership that I've shown. But the city's going to need money and we have to look at this and make, and see if there are some pieces of parcels of property on, like I said, school, on city property and school district property that's worth using in better ways. Because I don't think it's the best, it's being best, used in the best way right now.
Thank you. I think we have time for maybe a couple more questions. The next question, we'll start with you, Noli. Using examples from your past, describe why you would be the best fit for District Seven.
Oh, wow. Okay. So just recently, you know, with the city, like why, my family owns a guava orchard. I run my family's guava orchard up in North County, San Diego. It was leased to the developer, the Lalex Hills Development. And I negotiated with that developer back in two thousand and eleven. Everything was great. And everything was great in the beginning. But I made sure that I negotiated that when things went bad, that my family was protected. And the deal did go bad because that project didn't get approved. And we ended up getting a joining piece of property that, that they owned as security. And we made sure, I made sure that my family's protected and I'm going to do the same thing with my city. But another thing that I do as a, as a business owner is I make sure that we inspect properties before Dirty Birds acquires new, new restaurants. But one thing I tell people, don't just look at, especially flipper houses, don't look at just the beauty of the house. You got to knock holes in the walls and look at the plumbing and look at the foundation and look at any mold behind, behind what's going on with the properties. But that type of experience is invaluable when, when working with the city, the private sector experience.
Thank you. Raul?
Sure. So, you know, my, my private sector experience isn't as an owner, but it's as a investigator of white collar criminal conduct. You know, spending three and a half years with an international law firm. And when a multinational company calls and says, investigate what went wrong with this deal and where the bad actors were. You know, there's weeks where I'm sitting there reading tens of thousands of emails to understand how corporate CEOs hid things, how mid-level managers were deceiving people. One-on-one ashtray would not have got past me. And part of that is because you can't really trust a land deal that involves the mayor's biggest contributor. That's a red flag right there. But on, on top of that, working for the city, you know, I prosecuted crime in every single neighborhood, whether it's vandalism in Tirasana, whether it's hate crimes in Linda Vista and domestic violence across the entire city, unfortunately. I actually have a sense of the suffering that people are going through because I protect the victims. So my corporate experience plus public service.
Thank you. And our last question, Raul, we'll start with you. What is your position on clean elections?
Oh, the clean elections, yes. I, I would like to see us work towards this. You know, it's expensive for the city to fund public elections. But Noli and I will both agree that spending hours on the phone to ask for money is not fun and it's not talking to voters about their problems, right? And ultimately, it allows people who aren't, you know, don't have business connections, that don't have, like, like Noli and I do, to be able to raise money. So it lets the playing field of the average citizen get involved in the election without worrying about that. I mean, I think that's a great idea. And here's the other aspect of it too. There's a specific proposal for clean elections which says city tax dollars will be spent to make sure that, and it's a, it's a corruption prevention project, where you as the citizen know that this amount of money that is your city tax dollars, you get to allocate it. So it's not like the city just gives it to everybody equally. You get to say to the city, I like this candidate. I want my specific dollars to go to that candidate. I think that's a great idea. And it's not, it's not a ginormous amount of money to spend on cleaning up corruption and favoritism.
Thank you. Noli?
Yeah, clean elections, it's a great idea. But my biggest problem with clean elections is using taxpayer dollars to fund elections. We're going to be in such, our budgets are going to be so tight. The last thing we need to spend money on, more money on is elections. We need to spend money, taxpayer monies on, on fixing our streets and our roads and, and funding our government services that are going to be badly, badly needed in the upcoming year. So it's a funding issue for me. And it's a great idea in theory, but it's just using our taxpayer dollars to fund elections is probably not the best use of our, our taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. Well, before our candidates give their closing remarks, I want to thank you for attending and asking such good questions. Be sure you are registered to vote and that your address is correct at sdvote.com. And be sure to fill out your census form at my2020census.go. Also, please attend more league events where we give in-depth information on all sides of critical issues affecting our communities. And now for our candidates' closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes and we will begin with Noli.
Yeah, okay. I've been feeling bad. It's, you know, this election is taking, you know, it's very, this campaign has been great. It's also been very tiring. You can see by my eyes, I'm coming off, you know, my father's funeral past weekend, this past weekend. I haven't gotten much sleep. And I didn't know where Mission Village Drive, but I live, I live a mile from Mission Village Drive. So I apologize that, for that. But what this, what differentiates me, and I thank everybody for, for attending tonight, is that we need a representative city council. In my experience as a small business owner, a successful small business owner, it opened in two thousand and eight during a tough time. My, my other business, my, my guava orchard, this isn't the first quarantine that I've survived. We had to shut down through a fruit fly quarantine back in two thousand and three. So I'm used to going through tough budget times, tough times, and I'll lead the city through this tough times in the upcoming years. So I'm also extremely dedicated. My record speaks for itself. This isn't about politics. You don't see me talking about my political party and it's not advertised on everything. Because this isn't important. I'm not working on campaigns. I'm not doing, I'm not running for, to advance my political party. I am doing it for our communities and for the city because I love the city. I've shown a record of public service, community service. I just want to continue that. And people just saw me as someone, as, I was encouraged to run because I was a successful small business owner, but someone that really cared and someone had a good heart that can do some big things with the city. So that's what we need. I've been supported from people from all across the political spectrum, from, from people. We had two of the, our former opponents, me, Raul's former opponents, Monty McIntyre and Sharon Larios, they didn't endorse Raul. They endorsed me. They're not even, they don't even believe in a lot of the same things that I believe in. But they, they see me as the true leader and someone that is the right person to, to lead this, to represent this district. And I hope I've earned your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And Raul, your closing statement?
Sure. I, I, thanks very much. And, you know, I'm just going to quickly say, for those who know Noli and never heard of his dad, his dad is a really amazing guy. And it's really unfortunate that he passed away. He was a pioneering doctor in Orange County.
Thank you, Raul. That really means a lot. Thank you.
He really was a great guy. You know, here's, here's the core of what we're talking about here. So, you know, it's a political campaign. And the issues we talked about was, were really what's in your backyard and what's in your front yard and on the street where you take your kids to school. And I want you to think about the particularity of our answers and how much we've really studied up and knocked on doors and chatted with you about the issues. Because that's what represents who we're going to be on the city council when we respond to your problems. You know, I became a prosecutor, as I said before, because my brother passed away from a scourge of opioid addiction. And in that job, I learned so much about how we can build trust between our communities of color and police officers. And I think they both want to come together. I don't believe the media narrative that we are so polarized. People really are much closer than, than we realize. And I can be that bridge because I'm bringing fresh blood to the city council. I, I may have been involved in politics because I know that politics really matters. But I don't bring political connections to the, to the table. You know, I, I don't host fundraisers for my political party at, at my restaurant. I'm really about walking in every single day to the courtroom and saying, Raul Campio, for the people of the state of California. Because that's really what my job has been to serve you already. And I think every single day when I walk into work about my brother and how many families I've met have suffered, like mine have. And I think, how am I being my brother's keeper? That's what really motivates me. And that's how I'm going to be when I'm your city councilor. Thanks so much. My name is Raul Campio.
Thank you. As a reminder, the views expressed are those of the candidates, not of the League of Women Voters. On behalf of the Sarah Mesa Community Council and the League of Women Voters of San Diego, I want to thank the candidates for running for office and attending our forum this evening. And thank you again. You are here tonight because you are following the league motto. Don't just be a voter, be an informed voter. Registered voters will receive their ballots in the mail, drop it off or mail it by November third and encourage others to vote as well. Thank you and good night.